Welcome. I think we have a full Town Council and a full School Committee. This is a good night, all of our Town staff, welcome. I'd like to call to order the Town Council regular session, and the time is 7:10, and the date is April 9th, 2013. And if we could, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale, could we please have the roll call?
The President.
Present.
The Vice President.
Here.
The Councilman.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Dale. This is a public hearing with School Committee participation relative to the Town Council's preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2013-14, as adopted on March 18th, 2013, and this public hearing will address both the general fund and the school fund. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
We will be going through the broadsheet, which has been used as a handout this evening, and also was included in the most recent edition of the South County Independent as an insert into the newspaper. And starting, the budget process for the 2013-14 year began back on December 20th of 2011, with the initial budget hearing that was conducted by the Council in conjunction with the School Committee. Since that time, the Council conducted three work sessions relative to the capital budget and adopted its capital budget on January 28th of 2013. I'm sorry?
Is it an hour?
After completion of the capital improvement program by the Council on January 28th, the Town Manager's Office submitted its proposed budget for Council consideration for the 2013-14 year on February 28th. The Manager's proposed budget was reviewed by the Council in four work sessions, three relative to the municipal programs, and one in conjunction with the School Committee in review of the school budget. And the Council adopted a preliminary municipal budget on March 18th. Moving forward this evening, there are two work sessions that are scheduled, or public hearings that are scheduled, in the month of April. Those will be tonight and tomorrow, tomorrow night. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide opportunity for the general public to be able to ask questions or get information. If that information isn't available tonight, hopefully the information could be garnered by tomorrow night to be able to provide that information to the general public. In compliance with the Charter on or before April 21st, qualified electors do have the opportunity with 25 signatures to present petitions for the Council's consideration before they adopt a final budget, which is scheduled for April 29th. Any question presented with 25 signatures from qualified electors will be required to be responded to in the affirmative or negative by the Council on a direct vote in advance of the adoption of the final budget. Subsequent to the adoption of the final budget document by the Council on April 29th, between the dates of May 1st and May 12th, electors also have the opportunity with 200 signatures from qualified electors on a form approved by the Town Clerk's Office to request a budget referendum. Budget referendum would be conducted on the first Tuesday following the first Saturday in the month of June. The 200 signatures would be necessary with decision questions required to be in no less than amounts of $250,000, either to ask for increase or decrease on either the school fund or on the Town's general fund. That's the budget process that we're in the midst of. The broadsheet, I'd like to address that at this point. On the front page of the broadsheet is a summary of the preliminary general fund budget. It shows that the budget, as adopted by the Council as a preliminary budget, is presented in the amount of $74,195,340. It's an $858,928 increase, or 1.17% over the adopted budget for the current year, the 2012-2013 year. We're showing on the first sheet what the implications are and potential impact will be on the property tax. As you can see, we're anticipating non-property tax revenues of $8.4 million, so a net property tax need of $65.8 million. In addition to the $65.8 million, an additional $1,280,000 is necessary for overlay and elderly abatement adjustments on the tax levy. So the overall tax levy that's being proposed is $67,66381. We're anticipating about almost $3.5 million of that sum will come from motor vehicle excise tax, and the remainder, the $63,587,861, would come from the tax role within the As I think everybody is aware, we're currently conducting a full property revaluation. Notices of new property values were sent out during, approximately four weeks ago. Hearings are being held at this time on what those values will be. When I projected the tax rate at $15.44, it was based on anticipation of seeing a 5.2% decline in the taxable base of the community, where we would go from approximately $4.35 billion to $4.12 billion, or $226 million in reductions. As I said to the Council at the time that the preliminary budget was adopted, this is a preliminary estimate. There's still work that needs to be done on that roll before it's certified on June 15th, once the tax assessor has completed both the review of the values as presented by Vision Appraisal and made the adjustments necessary to deal with farm, forest, and open space reductions, as well as conservation lands. Those reductions could amount to as much as $14 to $15 million. For every penny on the tax rate, it's equal to about $2.8 million in taxable property adjustments. So potentially, you could have between a five and six cent plus or minus figure on the number that we were working at. So in round numbers, that $15.44 could, my best estimate now, again, two months before we would certify, is at the $15.44 to $15.50 range, because I think we will see additional erosion on the taxable base, based on the adjustments that'll be necessary on the open space values that have yet to be entered into the computers at this time. So again, starting with that first sheet, we're projecting that with the Council's proposed budget, we will see an increase in the tax levy going up $666,599, or 1%. So we would be looking at a 1% levy increase over the current year's property tax levy. If we move on to the inside page, on page two, the first chart presents a summary of the municipal budget. And the municipal budget is made up of eight separate funds: general fund, school fund, water, wastewater, solid waste, Peastale Offices, Neighborhood Guild, and Senior Program. Overall, the net budget for the Town, which has been adopted by the Council at this point, would be $89,907,67, an increase of $442,000, or a one-half of 1% increase over the eight funds from the current year. The next display shows the general fund, and certainly I can answer questions as we go along. If anyone has questions on any of the displays here, or needs clarification on any of the components of those budgets, between myself, Alan, or the Council, we can address those issues. The general fund, again, is shown at the $74,195, the 1.17% increase. If there's no questions on the general fund, we could move on. We move on to the next fund, is the school fund. The school fund is presented by the School Committee after revisions at $58,625,500. That is an increase of $375,100 over the current year budget for the school fund. If there's questions on the school fund, those should be addressed at this time, and between the Superintendent and I will attempt to address those concerns. It's important to note that as far as state aid is concerned, we're anticipating that overall state aid will be reduced by approximately $382,000 over what was budgeted in the current year. Of that $382,000, approximately $310,000 is directly associated to implementation of the third year of the education aid formula that was instituted through the General Assembly. We're also anticipating marginal changes, about a $10,000 reduction in local revenue sources, but we are projecting a 2% increase in the levy value, or the tax transfer from the general fund to the school fund, and that would be going up $767,283. So net revenues would be at the $375,100 increase in the budget. The categories within the expense statement are presented within that chart, showing out at the $58,625,500 figure. If there's questions, we can take those at this point. If there are none, we'll move on with the, to the water fund on page three. On page three, the Water Enterprise Fund. When we deal with the enterprise funds, there are no property tax supports provided for any of the enterprise funds. And in fact, either for the Peastale Offices or for the Neighborhood Guild, Senior Services, there is a small contribution transfer that is property tax associated. The water fund, we're looking at really a budget reduction of approximately $16,500. We are not recommending any changes in the rate structure. The rate structure provides the necessary revenues to accommodate the expenses associated with the water fund. At this point, the cost on South Shore and Middle Bridge Water Systems is $178 for the first 5,000 cubic feet of water. If there's use in excess of 5,000 cubic feet, it's billed out at $2.97 per 100 cubic feet. So those are the costs that are in place today. There's no changes that are recommended in the 2013-14 year. No questions, we'll move on to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. With the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, that's down about $81,927 from the current year. Again, with wastewater, there is no rate increases. The current rates that will be used in implementation of the 2013-14 year would be the base rate for residential use at $229 per unit for 10,000 cubic feet of water passed through, and $2.90 per 100 cubic feet for any excess use over the 10,000 cubic feet. Again, current year rates will be extended next year as well. Moving on, Peastale Office Building. Peastale Office Building, I recall when it was built in 1856, we purchased that in 1983. Right now, there's nine tenants. I'm trying to find out who's paying attention, who's not. Not many paying attention. The nine tenants really provide about 90% of the income associated. We are operating with nine tenants, which are commercial rent base, and we've got space there that's also used for excess program activities from the Neighborhood Guild. Overall budget of about $91,000, with projected incomes of $97,000. Neighborhood Guild, built in 1908, Alan remembers that one. 1940 was when it was deeded to the Town. We're getting to you too, Vespa. With the Neighborhood Guild, we're looking at about 46% of the revenue comes from trust income, and about 42% comes from program activities. So the program is set so that we run the Neighborhood Guild in terms of its operational costs, hopefully for that and the capital improvements directly through the endowment funds and the reinvested income. And we look to make each of the programs that are operated as self-sufficient, so the income is equal to what our expenses are for running those programs. That's the objective of maintaining that Neighborhood Guild operation. Moving on, the Senior Services Program has four program components: transportation, the nutrition program, the Adult Day Services, and the Senior Center itself. Our budget projection is at $782,000, and it's a $30,000 increase over the current year program. Approximately half of that increase is related to expanded service requirements associated with the Adult Day Service Program. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the back page. The back page provides 11 different resolutions that we request the Council to adopt on a yearly basis. This is a roadmap for finance as to what funds are moving from one fund to another fund for accounting purposes. The first resolution, Reserve Fund Transfers, is directly related to our capital improvement program. Monies are appropriated as a capital budget within the 2013-14 year budget, and then are transferred out of the general fund into the various capital funds. So that we'll be transferring those dollars out. That way, the monies will not be, if the monies are not expended within the fiscal year of 2013-14, they would not revert back to general fund balance. This provides us with opportunity to be able to build balances up within each of the capital reserve funds, to be able to have projects done on a timely basis. It also provides us with the opportunity with capital equipment acquisitions not to purchase the equipment until the useful life of the existing equipment has expired. In some communities, they're afraid that they have to spend the money or lose the money, they'll be trading in equipment earlier than they need to. By using the capital reserves, we get around that type of a problem. The second is the transfer of $25,000 out of the school fund into the technology fund, again, a capital fund transfer, so that that money would not be available if it would revert back to school fund balance, were it not being transferred into that reserve. The third, fourth, fifth, and sixth resolutions deal with revenue sources for the general fund. We have impact fees that pay down debt service associated with recreation, and $118,000 is a revenue to the general fund. In question number five, we have $225,000 from open space that's used as a revenue in the general fund. We have the $70,000 that comes into the general fund from the impact fees for school building debt service. And we also have utility and special revenue funds. They pay for administrative services that are provided through the general fund. So this would be for payroll for various services that are provided through the Finance Department. We obtain reimbursements. Emergency medical billing is also another capital, is also a reserve fund, an internal fund which is used that provides a $500,000 revenue. These are the monies that we collect from the various insurance companies or Medicare for services rendered within the EMS program. This pays down what the cost of the operating budget is for EMS. Question number seven on other general fund transfers, these are the transfers that one would go to the school fund, which is the transfer from the general fund for the property tax that balances out their budget. Same with the elderly services for the 363, which is appropriated in the general fund and transferred out to the Senior Services Program. And the wastewater transfer is the money that's necessary for onsite wastewater disposal system management, which has nothing to do with the wastewater system, but the services are rendered by the wastewater system on behalf of that general fund expense. The question number eight is the approval and authorization for the trustees of the school funds to be able to release the $429,000 to the Neighborhood Guild, that, as I mentioned earlier, pays down a major portion of the cost of operating the Guild facility itself. Nine is a transfer from the general fund to the compensated absences reserve. Compensated Absences Reserve Fund is a fund which holds dollars necessary to pay when somebody leaves the employment of the Town, and this would be for unused vacation or a portion of sick leave accruals that would be in their balance at the time that they were to leave service. This is $100,000 that we budget within the general fund's police department account on a yearly basis that would be then transferred into the compensated absences reserve. The same holds true for number 10, which is the Senior Services, where they're also putting direct contributions into compensated absences in the amount of the $22,000. And question 11 is monies that need to be transferred from the Senior Services Fund to the Construction Fund for the completion of the project which we just finished at Old Post Road for the Adult Day Services Expansion. Each of those resolutions needs to be provided to the Finance Department for audit purposes for us to be able to make the necessary transfers. That's a summary in capsule of the overall budget that is a preliminary budget at this point, that is up for public hearing both tonight and tomorrow evening. With that, Alan, I'll address any questions or comments that the Council may have.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to start here at the table, on me, the Town Council School Committee, if there's any questions before I open it to the public. Jim?
Yes, Steve or Alan, number eight resolutions, deed of gift, the Neighborhood Guild. How high has that number been? $429,000 for next year's budget, but what levels in the past have you reached, Alan?
Let's see, last, I believe, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, probably it was 12, 13, so we were at 467 back in the 9, 10 year, but a lot of that was due to compensated absence transferred by 2000, that was in the normal league. So it's been creeping up just, you know, maybe 1%, 2% per year over the last few years.
That transfer is made up really of three components. So you've got the trust funds for $368,000, which is up from, I think, $360,000 in the current year. But the other two components, one is to pay debt service associated with the 20-year bond that was let, I think in 1994, for the Guild, and that's $55,438. And the rest is that we budget about $6,500 for general capital enhancements of the building. So that gets you to the 429. Those are the three components. So really, that, which is going toward the operations of the building, is limited to $368,000, but it's up $8,000 over what the current year appropriation requirements were.
Thank you.
Any other questions here at the table? Do you have others, Jim?
Yeah, just one question. We were talking about, and I think the School Committee's put together a facilities audit plan for, I don't know when this all begins, but I'm just catching up on things. And there against the Times reported that the state, about 75% of the public school buildings in Rhode Island are generally good condition. When did the state complete theirs and is as detailed or thorough as we're planning?
Mr. O'Neil, I think you're referring to the Schoolhouse Report that came out from the Governor's Office last week. I'm not certain when they completed it, but I know that it came across our desk last week. I believe their facilities report is different. When I reviewed it, it had to do with a lot of maintenance directors and folks on site doing their own internal review and reporting out sort of a self-assessment of the general condition of buildings. What the School Committee is looking to do is a deeper study with outside professionals coming in to take a look specifically at the envelope of the buildings. The Schoolhouse Report also tried to look at capacity within districts to determine if they could consolidate schools throughout the state, if they could share services throughout the state in order to reflect Rhode Island's declining enrollment. And Rhode Island's need, town by town, to be able to take a look at the most efficient plan available. And so that's my interpretation. I don't know if John wanted to add anything, but that's how I read it when I received it.
Kristin, I didn't know if you had anything to add to the School Committee budget, you know, to add on to anything Steve has said.
I think Mr. Alfred did a wonderful job.
She gets off easy.
Yeah, one last question. The binding arbitration bills up in the General Assembly, I know the Council's unanimous, I think the School Committee is unanimous too, am I under that assumption? But when I went to the School Committee meeting with a couple of the legislatures, I was quite convinced that two of them were not in our camp, if you will. I don't know where you stand or what you know from them. It was Mrs. Walsh and Mrs. Tansey, who I thought would support both the Senate and the House bill. But if you know something different, I'd love to know, but that's always something that we're asked many questions about.
I certainly was present at the same meeting. I would say that we have two legislative representatives from the School Committee who keep their ear to the ground in terms of what's happening much more specifically than at our last meeting with the legislators. And I don't know if Mr. Delia LaBelle or Mr. Miller has anything new to report other than what we heard on that day.
Well, I would add just a quick comment, and that is...
Because I've never been there.
Never felt closer to you, Steve. Thank you. The binding arbitration bill probably is more complex in its handling in the General Assembly this year than it has been over the past several years. We have been, on the School Committee, clear in our position on that. We've passed a resolution. We have communicated with our legislators about that position. We provided testimony before Labor when the bill was heard, so there's no ambiguity about where we are. And I know that the Town Council has equally been clear. When I was at the General Assembly, either last week or the week before, it's pretty clear that there is an ongoing negotiation process between the Senate and the House, and local unions are quite active in representing their position. And local unions are quite active in representing their position. The hearing before Labor in the House, literally the only advocates for binding arbitration were union representatives. And I think that that, there is no ambiguity on the part of legislators about who's in favor and who's opposed. But this is a complex year, and there are some very thorny issues that they're being lobbied on. And whether there will in the end be quid pro quo, and there's a lot of speculation about that. I don't know, Jonathan, whether you want to add anything to that, but.
I just, I don't think I would really want to represent the positions of our legislators who are not in agreement with what we're advocating for. And I would just leave it at that.
Maybe, I don't know, Steve, talking to Dan Beersley, do you have any other current thoughts, League of Cities and Towns?
I think we're hearing the same thing that Scott's indicating is that there's an awful lot of issues that are, that are in a state of flux at this point. And a lot of it depends on what items are going to be serviced between the two chambers. So this still is, it's alive. There hasn't been a lot of discussion on the binding op bill since its hearing. But that doesn't mean it won't come back off the table.
Thank you.
Any other questions here at the table? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the microphone for any questions or comments from the public. This is the public hearing, and this is the time for the public to respond to the budget.
Alan, before we do that, one thing I didn't go over were the adjustments that were made subsequent to the public hearing. And maybe that should be placed on the record.
Good idea. Thank you.
The Town Manager's budget included two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars in a state incentive aid program which was within the Governor's budget. As we got closer to the council's adoption of the preliminary budget, all indications were that there was probably less than a fifty-fifty chance that that money was going to be appropriated. So what my recommendation to the council at the time that they were adopting the preliminary budget was to remove the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars as a revenue, and to increase undesigned fund balance from eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. We had dropped the unassigned funds from a million down to eight hundred when we put the budget together for fear that that money wouldn't show up. And this would provide us with at least everything but eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of being able to deal with that shortfall of revenue. So the council agreed to remove the two eighty-eight out of the budget and to increase, so we had a net increase in tax needs of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I also recommended to the council consider the deletion of the cable television interconnect at the twenty-one thousand dollar budgeted item that was in the manager's budget, based on the fact that we were looking at a twenty-one thousand dollar cost in the first year and continuing costs between ten and eleven thousand dollars each year thereafter. And because the way we have used cable television in the past is that we would have the second and fourth week arrogance that would have the first and third week, the nights that they have their council meetings. So essentially, you'd be getting just two of the weeks unless you were getting authorization from the other community to be able to use that. We felt that the cost wasn't justified based on the fact that we were trying to minimize what the tax levy increases were. So the council agreed to reduce that twenty once we got down to a point of needing to increase the tax levy by sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That was incorporated into the council's budget. The council also adjusted the manager's recommended budget on six different accounts. One was the Johnny Cake Center. That increase went from six to eight thousand dollars. It was a two thousand dollar increase over what was proposed in manager's budget. The Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce was increased from seven to eight thousand dollars, a one thousand dollar increase. Peace Dale Revitalization was increased from one to two thousand dollars, a one thousand dollar increase. So the Downtown Merchants was increased from one to two thousand, a thousand dollar increase. And Washington County Regional Planning went from three thousand to four thousand dollars, or one thousand. So the net adjustments that the council made were six thousand dollars in terms of increased expenditures over the revisions that were recommended by the manager in advance of the budget being adopted. So those were the changes. I wanted to put that on the record because the written budget that's online shows the manager's proposed budget, but does not show those revisions. Certainly, the broadsheet that we have tonight does show those revisions, but since it's in summary form, it doesn't show it in detail.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, I'm going to go back to the public.
I'm sorry, Alan's correct. It wasn't Johnny Cake. It was, was it Welcome House? It was Welcome House.
Welcome House, six thousand to eight thousand. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the microphone for any comments from the public. Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the table one more time. I know I have just one parting comment that I brought up before at work sessions about family community engagement. So I'll end with that. But Jonathan has a question?
Yeah, I just want, it just does tie into the budget to an extent where people probably in the community are aware of the South Kingstown Education Foundation putting together the event for Erica Van Pelt benefit variety show, whatever that was called. And as I understand, it was a great, great night. And so it's a little bit of a celebratory piece, just, you know, some of the good things that happened in our community with our school system. It was a real fun night on a personal level. A couple of my children performed. So it was kind of a little bit of a celebration for myself on a personal level. But I do understand that more than, or around eleven thousand or more was raised that evening to benefit the Music and Arts Program in South Kingstown. And so, and it's maybe, it's just, it's a good reminder that when community and government works together, good things happen.
We made mention of it at our Town Council meeting on Monday night. It was a fabulous, fabulous evening. The only thing that I've brought up in the past is the family community engagement. If there's any loss of Title I funds, I'm just hoping that that program can, you know, remain sustained. So, brought it up before, and I'll just say it again.
Certainly. So the Family Community Engagement Operational Budget, the local operational budget, is maintained level funding. As you know, a portion of it is funded by Title I, which is federal disadvantaged student funds. And we would not know what our allocation from Title I from the federal government would be until late April, when the Consolidated Resource Grant is written through the Departments of the Assistant Superintendent and the Special Education Director. And so they always, we need to wait until the federal government budget comes out to see if any of our programs that are funded with Title I are affected. But in terms of this conversation this evening, it's level funded.
Thank you. Any other comments before we adjourn? Again, any more public comments? No comments here at the table? All right, I just can't, you know, thank the town staff, Stephen Allen and Dr. Stringfellow and John Rashat, Town Council School Committee, all of our department heads and town staff for putting together this budget. I think that what is represented here in the audience is a satisfaction of the work that's done here in South Kingstown with the fine fiduciary responsibility. And with that said, we will adjourn at seven fifty. Thank you.